To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
It wasn't that close.
We call the meeting the worst at nine o'clock. You brought the pledge in front of it today. It's more important.
That's right.
Okay. Everyone has an agenda. Bring changes or maybe make the agenda.
Can we add to old business the, I guess you already did the rental agreement. We'll talk about that when I let everybody got and ask some questions. Let everybody got on how it was set up before and.
Just talk about it. I don't know if everybody, I think everybody got the letter. We need to add it or just make sure we discuss it again.
Could we just discuss it?
Under new business, I'd like to add that. The Rock Springs R and B, Leonard, the BLM. Was there any other changes or additions?
Under old business, I would like to add just a little discussion about, I guess this whole business, about board training and the new financial training for people.
Just discuss that.
Yeah.
Put it as training?
Yes.
Anything else? I'm going to take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Salute.
Second. Got a motion from second to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Work on vouchers. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment this morning? There is none? We'll move on. Is Jimmy outside?
Yes, he is.
Come on in, Jim.
Morning, Jim.
Your CMAC application was here. We requested 195,000 and they awarded us 78,000. If we were to do the project as is, our portion will be 132,000. Probably just scale it back. I think that's enough for all of them.
If you, if you scale some of this back, will they take that? The 78,000, how will we do now?
Yeah, but we need to let them know.
Okay.
So, you know, if we just give the 78,000, our match would be like 16,000. And it comes to around 18,500 a mile. I'll just get it all back quick then.
How soon do we need to let these, let them know?
I believe tomorrow afternoon.
Perfect, six, very quick.
Yeah.
Those numbers again, real quick, Jim?
It's about 18,500 a mile, roughly, you know, 10,000 or 15,000.
And this is, this is gravel.
It's dust, right? Not too far.
Dust, right.
Yeah. And my plan was to move 2.8 miles to Morrison Road, four and a half miles of the river.
Which one would benefit the most of what you're lost?
Going off of traffic counts and you know, our counter on Beaverton Street is by the gravel pit. And we averaged 256 cars a day. Morrison Road averaged 196. And the Beaverton Creek cross was like three. So, I guess my suggestion would be to do that, you know, the first 3.8 of the Morrison Road and then two of Fisher Head on the river creek. On traffic on that, it's a good idea to do Mac on that.
Where's your traffic counter, north of the gravel pit or did you do one each side?
South.
South. Majority of that is in traffic, so you know. I guess. You're the expert on our road for all the traffic. What is the worst? I would, I would take your recommendation for what it is.
I agree.
We need to do that motion there?
So, out of this, we'll need 13,000?
Roughly 16.
Our match for 78,000, if they're going to fund, it would be 16,000.
Yes.
I make a motion to allow River Bridge Supervisor at his discretion to use the funds. Where can most benefit the traffic? Second. I have a motion from second to authorize River Bridge Foreman, Tim Hanson, to do the first 3.8 miles of the Morrison Road and the first, we're going to mile and a half.
I think it's seven tenths or something like that.
Seven tenths a mile of Beaverton Creek Road by the quarry for this CMAC grant for dust mitigation. Is there any other discussion? I'm sure our match will be approximately 16,000 for that. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
It should be done next week, hopefully, if it goes right. It's time to run some lights, maybe get on some of the stuff around town, especially everyone's in a mag on. I've been doing some work on the Shrine River, it's a place to call. Some spot building in places, so that's kind of what we're doing.
Bridge replacement on the Dury Road, where are we at?
They're working on it. They did get pipes, they're in place. They have to go down the pad. So, we'll kick it back. It was supposed to be a few days to do that and do that.
My apologies for not getting with you on that. I saw it came up last minute, so if I still can reach out to you, so I can go for a ride with you and figure that out. Came up pretty quick, so.
Do you still think 50,000 will be enough to add into this CMAC account? Like 5,000, another 16,000?
It probably depends on how much you're taking on. And then there's a pretty big chunk. 277,000 used every month.
I guess coordinated, definitely make sure we get that. We have to be digesting, make sure we get that in one time.
Did we have any vehicles, county vehicles affected by water and fuel or anything? Co-op had some, any issue here a week or so ago?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Just wanted to mention, I don't know if it's going to affect anything up on that breakneck road. That cattle crossing is starting to get overflowed there. I don't know if you have issues with snow mouth or any of that, but it is starting to get full, like up above the greens. Just letting them.
I guess maybe the blade, you guys have to shut off.
Is it awesome?
Yeah, it's pretty nice.
Just going to ask how the, look where the blade went and did it go wing on and everything?
Yeah, we took that off.
All right. The new blade, so we call up in while they're nice and shiny.
They're the best.
Last one you guys, kind of amazing when you crawl up and see how you, from the old blades for the new ones, how you can see out of them. They're pretty nice. Anybody else have any questions on Jim? Thank you. Cut back. He is Aaron now in the lobby. While we're waiting for Aaron, we will jump ahead real quick to the solid waste consensus fund. Well, in Casper, Beth Blackwell came around, handed these out to counties. It is consensus money. It was handed, it was clear back in from 2012 to 2016 that we awarded to the counties. They're wanting to get this cleaned up and off the books. Weston County has $93,498 in there. When that consensus money was granted to the counties, it's not in our coffers, it's sitting in the state's coffers right now. That amount was the original amount, I don't know what it was for, but it was for solid waste projects. Right now, we have, we're going to, we have, we're going to have three major solid waste projects going on in our county. Solid Weston County Solid Waste System is building land, build town of Upton is going to be doing a closure and the city of Newcastle is going to be doing a closure. I just did the math, we divide that by three, it's 31,166. We could award that to each one of these projects for a match because they can use it for a match and then that will be cleaned off our books. Because I'm afraid for too much longer, the state's going to come back and just sweep that account back into their general fund. So, if you pass that down, you can see what the other counties, T-TRON County still got over half a million sitting out there. They're the highest, but you know, we need the board's approval and we need to go to the city of Newcastle, the town of Upton. If everybody's in agreement, we can do a joint resolution, authorize that to each county or each entity and that will get cleaned off our books. We can let Beth know, that way if we have earmarks for a project, they won't touch it until either of them, that project is done.
Do we have an approximate on what our closures are going to cost?
Way more than that.
Okay.
We don't, I don't know. I know, I think the city of Upton, you're like, you're allocated like 1.3 million or something from the state on your closure. The town of Upton's over a million dollars on their closure that they're setting out there for funding for them. That little, it ain't a lot of money, but every little bit helps on these, eligible views for a match.
Do you want a motion or are we going to do a resolution?
I would, I think I'd entertain a motion to do that and I'll go to the other two entities and approach them with that. If everybody's in agreement, explain to each entity what's going on. If everybody's in agreement, we can prepare a joint resolution, be assigned by everybody and it'll be off our books forever.
I make a motion to use solid waste consensus fund and divide it into the three entities evenly for the closure of those, the projects that involve those entities.
I second that.
So, I have a motion from second to allocate the $93,468, divide equally between the three entities for solid waste projects that are going to be ongoing or coming up. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. I think so, Aaron. Jump ahead of you because.
That's all right.
You're up.
Okay. Aaron Purte with the Weston County 4H. So, it's National 4H Week, so I brought you guys just a fun little goodie. So, they're cool magnets that just say Weston County 4H on them. So, tomorrow is where green on Wednesday, so I encourage everybody to wear green for 4H Week. And then Thursday from five to, no, four to six, we're going to have an open house at the extension office. Hopefully enroll some new 4H members, get some of our past ones re-enrolled. So, feel free to swing by, have a goodie and yeah, just discuss 4H. So, that's kind of where we're at is the new 4H year begins October 1st. So, we're just gearing up for another fun year. So, my goal list is to hopefully reach a bigger number of 4H kiddos this year than we had these past two years. So, going to start doing some fun promotion throughout the whole month of October, hopefully, and get some 4H kiddos wound up or rounded up. I leave for Pittsburgh on Monday for the National 4H Conference, so I'll be there a week. So, I'm really excited about that. I'm hoping to network and hear some new ideas, some fun projects, hopefully some really cool things to bring back. I think there's eight of us from Wyoming going, so should be a really fun week. Hopefully Pittsburgh's nice and I'm hoping the East Coast is turning colors while we're out there.
It is.
Get to see some of that and not just the conference room at the motel, hopefully. And then we're working on achievement day, so October 29th, if you guys would like to join us, we'd love to have you. That day, we'll celebrate the end of this past 4H year and kind of get everybody excited for the new year, so. I think I have the senior center booked. I need to double check. I was on vacation last week, so I'm kind of getting back in the swing of what's going on in October. I swear September went by at 100 miles an hour, so. We had it at the senior center last year and I think I've got it reserved, so.
Would you send out reminders to us?
I will. I certainly will, once I get invitations for all the 4H kids done, so.
Aaron, would you include me on that reminder?
Yes, certainly. We would love to have the paper there. So, any questions about what's going on in the 4H world?
We talked last time you were here about where your numbers are. Do you have any where your, how much you've come up in the last few years?
I don't. That's, we've kind of started pulling some of those numbers and in the middle of all of that, we switched 4H, like software programs, so I can't just roll back through because the year before I started, they switched to Z suite from 4H online. So, I have no way to look back at those 4H online numbers, so I'm going to get ahold of the state 4H office because I think they should have.
Just curiosity aside, how we, you know, it seems like all of a sudden, the last couple, two, three years, we, the numbers are starting to grow again.
Yeah. It's, and I think a lot of that is, our shooting sports program is huge and they do a phenomenal job and we start looking at 75, 80 kids involved there. It really boosts our numbers, so. Yeah, lots of really fun stuff, so hopefully we'll tie in there and I'd like to tie into the school programs a little bit here or there if possible and get maybe a few more kids excited, so. I've been here a little while, it's easier to start hopefully moving into some of those spaces, so. So, that's what I have, just brand new 4H year, ready to go.
Question, on your involvement with like our ag teacher and our native one right now, is that, how are you guys working through that?
So, I was on vacation when I heard that we no longer have an ag teacher, so I was kind of surprised at that. You know, we work together for fair, but really on a day-to-day basis, all of that's done through the school. I did have a 4H parent that's also an FFA kid call me this morning because they're no longer going to the Nile, so we got them register, him registered to go up and judge as a 4H kid since he can't judge as an FFA kid this year. So, any of that that we can work with, like a lot of those judging contests, they either have to register through an FFA advisor or the 4H educator, so. I told the parents, I said, any of that that needs to happen will certainly do. So, I don't know how that'll all shake out because a lot of my kids are also FFA kids, so we'll facilitate that as much as possible. Thankfully, I mean, we're kind of in that, I mean, at least for fair stuff, we're in the kind of a slower season, so hopefully in the next few weeks, they'll be able to find somebody that can fill in in that position. If not, come spring, we'll tackle fair entries.
I know, I appreciate you working with the FFA kids, get them transitioned back to force the continued judging.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We can work through all of that stuff because it's crazy, even if like Kristy Lipp wants to, has been coaching a bunch of the kids, they won't give her access to any of that stuff to register them, so it's like, it's fine, just call, we'll get them registered and get stuff going, so. Okay. Well, no other questions, but that's all I have, was just National 4H Week and.
No other questions. Thank you for the update.
Okay.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Know. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Yes, have a great week?
Have fun.
Yes.
Bring back, bring back a lot of good ideas.
I'm hoping, so I think it'll be, that's um the food fund 4H program that we did last year and then just got refunded for year two um is something that some of the 4H educators had heard about at a previous conference, so it's really fun to, we'll, they'll do a lot of project sharing. So it's kind of fun to see what other places around the country are doing and how we can bring that here and bring some fresh, fun ideas, so I'm excited for that. So, hey, we'll have a great week.
You waiting for everybody else, David? Got all your crew here?
Yeah, we're here.
The crew up too? Move ahead with Fairgrounds.
Commissioner, commissioners, uh chairman, does everybody have this that we set up? Just to go through it really, really quick, I put, got quite a bit of stuff here, it's kind of informational. We'll all start out with the project reported, uh, with future completions on the fairgrounds, okay? I have some of it highlighted in red, uh we are losing money as far as the fairground, the indoor barn goes, we no longer have a credit card here. And I have called up, they recommended instead of a credit card, go to the app machine, I guess it doesn't have it, it doesn't really have it much with dust, that's two hundred dollars. We had to spend on that to get that going, it's, the other one was outdated anyhow, care had protested a long time ago that it was outdated and stuff like that. Um, another one we have, I think that would be kind of a high priority is, you know, we talked about the rock wall coming down, it's a big thing. We have electrical box standing right there, it's going over, it will cut our electricity to our, our outdoor crows nest. That electrical line goes from behind the office, across that box, and the box really loose, it's coming loose and it, and it goes to the uh crows nest and it goes to the bleachers, I believe, the grandstands, so that's something else, not a rock wall. You know, we talked about it way back before COVID, about the open class billing, I think we need to continue working on it, get it so we can use it. Uh, the only thing I could, I brought up on it is, uh, I think it still be beneficial for us because we had, we have some money still. Spray this, uh, insulate the roof, then from the cement wall up, there's like a two foot, spray that, put the ceiling back in, I think we have all the tiles. Um, I think our doors are okay, um, you know, we'd always use better doors in there, but the other thing we need to do is go inside where the cement comes together, the seams. A lot of those are busted out, we need to get, get that cut and get them all resealed. Because we got snakes in there at times and all kinds of bugs, you walk in the door and there's a, there's a good two-inch crack right there. Get them all sealed in, and I think the billing is yet, is usable then. We still have some work we haven't talked about on, on the vouchers, but I would like to see that, that project continue. Um, the event center, we still haven't found a contractor willing to do the, uh, the kitchen door, which we probably we shouldn't be using if we don't have that kitchen door running, uh, the leak and where they ran into the wall on the outside. Look, we still have those, those are the priority ones I think we need to really work on. We talked about some equipment, one thing we do have, a lot of this stuff here can probably be done if we find a part-time person or manager to, 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 to work into completing these here. The one thing we do have is we have one tractor out there to run the Kaiser, it's John Deere tractor. The air compressor, air conditioning compressor is making all kinds of noise, it's gonna go out. So if we can't fix the compressor, we're gonna have to figure out how to put the belts on it so we can run it without the AC. But it's really unpleasant to run without leases in the closed cab, so, you know, we'd like to be able to get that fixed too. But it's just getting louder and louder every time and it will, it's going to go out. Um, outside that, that's, that's, you know, just the list, look at that, I'd like to have you guys sit down and help prioritize this. I don't want to go out and look for bids on everything here because we're just wasting our time, but if we can get one or two projects at a time, we can go out and we start looking for bids on it and, 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 and moving forward with that. But that's, that's pretty much, you see a lot of painting on there, we have a lot of paint that's been put down. We got 4H groups wanting to paint, if we can get them sprayed and, or bowling. It's just, you know, I guess it's just your information, look at it to help us prioritize it and we can go forward. The red ones, I think we need to continue doing.
On the open class building, we had bids before on that or did you some kind of?
We had a bid on the insulation, yes, I, I have to go looking for it. We did not have, we did have some uh bids on some of the cement, we got two slabs, that's raised about this far. With the two walls, so, I don't know whether we grind them down or whatever we do, but we did not have a bid on cutting the seams out and trying to keep the bugs out. We did not have that, so we did have that, we, I can, I can try and find those and, and I think we got some people local here that does the spraying insulation. You know, outside that, the ceiling tiles can be done by, if we get a part-time person or a full-time manager personally, put those ceiling tiles back up for us. And then we'll have to decide what you want, I, I really think it's beneficial for us to do before.
So I know Nick will be with Howard White and up to these, I spray foam machine out too, okay? Can you send me his contacts?
Three oh seven, two five seven, one two six.
Probably got that.
I'll board your contacts, okay, and like I say, that's just kind of a list that we went down, there's probably a few other things on it. Um, the other page we have here, these are people we currently give uh discounts for, for using the facility. And we've talked about the charging and making money, that's part of, now I put everything I could think of here, I got weed and pest on it, I got the county shops. The reason I'm talking about them, they give us a lot of other benefits, Hale uses the water, but he comes back and he does weed spraying for us, bug spraying for us throughout the year as he gets time to do that, you know, it's a good washout for us. The county shops, they use a lot of water, they're using, you know, they was there today, but they do a lot of work for us down there, they dig us. They, they, they help us with the roads, they help us with everything we can do, but this is a beneficial, benefit list. If there's anybody other than us, we look at this, we start talking about what we're gonna charge people, we need to look at this list also as, as, as people that we give discounts or they use it for nothing, okay? If you have any questions on, like I said, just give me a call, we can, we can talk about it. Did I give you two, two uh sheets here to look at? There are rental fees and stuff like that. We talked about raising them, for your benefit, look at them, if we can get a couple people for, to sit down with a couple of us and, and, and agree to some prices and stuff like that, these are our prices that we do charge unless we give them a discount, okay? So take a look at those, um, if you see something we need to raise, let's, let's discuss it. Or like I say, we can sit down some evening, I think we can do it two-on-two, I think we can, and, and, and we can discuss them, okay? I know that, that was brought up, that was brought up a while back also, so we just need to get going on it if we're gonna do something on it.
What are you anticipating the sand to be here, David?
We have the sand, but there's a little bit of an issue with it, uh we got, there's, there's some small pea gravel in it.
There's a bunch of quarter inch minus in it.
Yeah.
Uh, we were informed, um, he's got, and he's got a bunch more sand for the outdoor arena. Um, we were not able to be there, we came in and dumped. You know, by the time we got there and looked at it, um, we dumped four trains on it, um. So about a hundred ton of sand, and there's some really, really good sand in there, but there is some quarter inch minus. We were informed the day of and dumping that it was reject sand, again, there's really good sand, but there's some rocks in it. Um, and there's some bigger, some big rocks that we went, walked through, picked out, worked up, picked out. Um, the issue is the quarter inch minus because there's a lot of. Um, talking to some people who look to use it, it's not an issue, talk to others, it's a huge issue. Meaning from uh, my personal opinion about it is for someone to come in, rent that indoor barn, put an event on, you want it to look great, you want it to look impeccable, it does not look like that with the quarter inch minus. Um, talked to some companies about screens and stuff, but uh we haven't got any prices or stuff like that. And with that, he's got six more truckloads of sand for the outdoor, I mean, if we could set up a screen or something for it, I mean, it'd probably be the best that grounds look for a very long time if we got everything screened out and, um, worked up. But we got on what price we do.
And what kind of help are you guys looking for for the, the R and R of that sand?
Um, not sure yet, it kind of depends on what, um, I just looked at Fisher about the, um, the, the screens. It just kind of depends on what, what instrument we end up using for it, um, they've got some options, they assured me that they've got the tool for the job though. Um, just kind of, um, brand new, know how all that stuff works, so kind of see what, what the manpower is, do it for whatever tool we end up or get approved for.
Like Billy said, that, that, you walk in that indoor barn and there is a big difference in the ground, it is, the ground is good, it's just got, you know, it's just got that quarter inch rock. There are a few big rocks, and it ain't like the stuff we pulled out, the sharp stuff, this is, this is just like pea gravel, just little stuff. Now, he talks about a lot, if you compare it to the whole loads they brought in, you're talking about a minor percentage, I think.
Yeah, it's not.
It really shows to its weight, you know, but, but when you look at the overall stuff we took in, it, it is a small percentage of what, what, what we actually brought into the, into the facility. So in walking through it and working it, I think it looks awesome, it feels awesome, it feels like you got, it ain't stepping on it, it's compacted, you actually got a sand base there to, to work with.
Yeah, it's not CFD, it's, it's, it's a very, very good base. And in fact, there was some people there, um, this morning, I stopped by, when I ran through, um, they were going, setting up to go ride in it and, um. They, uh, they liked, liked how it felt and then they walked across it and asked how was everything that was on it and, um, they're, they just displayed pea gravel, it's, it's visible scene, but they said, yeah, it feels great, you know, they walked across to hit the lights on and they said, it feels great.
Couple things, I'll just read this to you guys because I got it Monday, last Thursday. It's some pictures of that gravel on it, says, these are pictures of some of the rocks piled out of the indoor arena at the fairgrounds. The new sand hauled in by the Delaney Hanes is very unsuitable for any kind of, um, asper, uh, aspirin discipline. Um, please spend a little money to fix this again, it would not bother me to pay twenty dollars an hour to use them if it wouldn't cost me a possibility of a horse or its leg. Um, they sent us some pictures which, you know, just so you guys are aware of it. But a couple things going back to the projects, I know it's difficult to get bids, but these are county buildings, some, some is like the rock wall. We, we, we have to get some type of bids to be able to figure out what money we're spending, so whether we've gotten some old ones or whatever, we need. In my opinion, we need to get some bids so that we can get this stuff fixed for you, it should not come out of fairgrounds budget.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I'm just because we had that conversation before as far as the tractor goes, are we unable to take that tractor over to the shop unless the county shop and let them look at it to determine what, what they can do with it, if anything?
I don't, I don't believe so, it's just that, with just two people, we can't make a decision.
No, I understand, I'm just saying.
No, I think they can, it's not an issue, it's just, these are just a list of everything that I can think of, some of them are very minor, like the compressor, I mean, it's gonna go out on us, outside that, I think the tractor's good, you know, and we've had work on the water truck that breaks, I think the water truck's working good. It ain't the most pleasant thing to drive, but it works good.
Well, my, my point is on the bids though, is we, we need to get some people in to get some bids so that we can figure out from that to get, get it going. We can't start a project and not get bids on it, you know, see what I'm saying, we, we want to fix it.
Now, the bids we've had have been replacing the rock wall with this rock. Now, there's a couple other options, you can go in front of the, in front of the grandstands now, we can get a bid if someone put a block all the way out, just like they have there. A rear above thing we can, but we can get these big blocks and we can stack them and go down there. Uh, it's, it's just that if we have a guide, say, what you guys want to see with it, we can go out and get you a bid and, and we should be good to go.
Well, me personally, if they, we could have a couple options there for bids, so if you could get us a couple of those options and then we'll go, but, you know, at least I would listen to your recommendations on what it needs, but um without bids, we're kind of shooting in the dark, we can't just say, go fix it.
And that's, that's what I'm hearing, we haven't read, we think it's something we should work on, that's what you're saying.
Now, I don't know if it's a problem either, but I would caution us, 4H is awesome, but if they're out painting buildings and one of the kids gets hurt, I don't know what kind of insurance coverage we have for that, and nobody wants that, but we need to be careful about that with that.
They can't be climbing and stuff like that.
Yeah.
But I believe the, uh, 4H, when they do a 4H, don't they have an insurance?
4H has liability insurance, but also, and I know at one point in time, fairgrounds had job descriptions for volunteers.
Okay.
And LGLP will, the LGLP insurance would cover that.
Okay.
And that goes for, I mean, anything we do on the, on the fairgrounds is volunteers. Um, you know, if we, if we come in, we act as volunteers, we, and we fall into that job description, we would be covered by LGLP. And that does not just limit us to, you know, painting or.
Okay. I just don't want anyone to get hurt.
But I mean, if, um, I mean, it comes down to the projects and stuff, you know, and helping, I mean, that covers us to, as a volunteer, to actually run the equipment on the fairgrounds as well. And so as a volunteer, you're, if you're in, underneath that job description, you are technically an employee of the fairgrounds, even though you're an unpaid employee, you're a volunteer employee, and so your liability insurance would cover the volunteers.
And like I said, it was just a question.
We're not gonna put them on left, right, or anything like that.
Well, I mean, weird things happen, you know, yeah.
Well, yeah, and I think it's great they want to help, I just don't want to see anyone get hurt, that's all.
I have a couple of questions and, um, uh, I had a phone call that there's a couple of people interested on the board, have they put in their applications?
It's on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, okay. Um, I think you're coming to us with your list because you're kind of between a rock and a hard place right now, you can't make any decisions being two people. So, uh, but I feel, I mean, I feel comfortable with them, you making a decision about which priority and then getting this, those bids, bringing them back to us so you can get started. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but, but you're, you're more, you're more familiar with what's going on there, so we we need you to get those bids back, you make the priority list. Um, do we have to give him permission to take the tractor to the county shop since?
I think that's part of maintenance.
Yeah, that's what.
His maintenance, okay.
Some stuff.
Um, have you advertised for your manager again and?
I forgot, it didn't make, it should be this week.
Okay, is there, is there a pay scale on there also?
I did not put on it, kind of based on, on their experience more than anything.
I think that's what's gonna get you interest because people see a job description, if there's not a pay scale, it doesn't pique their interest. Um, because at least I, from my experience with, with human resources, if you, if you don't have a pay scale, people won't go forward and looking into the job, it's just something to think about.
And we could probably change it for the next week and, and, you know, we could probably come up with something.
Because I've had a couple people contact me about it and want to know the pay scale, so they're interested, but they don't want to go forward without knowing that.
So we're good, but this is just your guys' information, you know, everything, okay, now, the most important one. This is what we talked about, zeroing out the account. Um, all the way down to the green, basically, these are, these are the checks and deposits, everything that's went into the bank since, uh, uh, before September seventh. Now, I started out with the deposit we, what we have remaining in the bank and there, then I put down the checks that hadn't been deposited cashed yet, checks that need to be issued. The only thing I do not have on here is Pizza Barn Beer Guard and beer. We have, everybody's asking for that, that amount, I have no idea what it is, we have to get an invoice on it or anything like that. What that's telling us, if we get down to the bottom here, is that we're, if we zero that account out, our, our entertainment account, we got, we need a hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents and we go right to the sand table to fill this out, it's not a clue to beer guard. That's the checks that you see right here, now, if there's any kind of a penalty or delay on some of these pay, uh, you know, I mean, yeah, on some of these, it's not, it's, it's not on you, this is what the original bills were. So if we zero it out like you guys wanted it, I'm sure we need a hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. We are in the way, we are in the works of uh writing the checks for all the premiums, I think there was a hundred and sixteen or a hundred and twenty-six or something like that. So anyway, that's where we stand. Now, this one that's in yellow, that is a credit card that showed up in our deposits, and that, that was actually paid out through our, our monthly doctors, doctors. So I actually, I took that out of there because that wasn't part of, I mean, that just showed up in there as far as. So that's where we're at with that. Be honest with you, none of these checks that went out past the green that, that says they need to be issued, they're ready to go. That's where we're at.
Do you want to come over to, at a financial, you need to get done that check for a hundred and twenty-two, fifty-five, or a hundred and twenty-eight?
We should wait because it said some of these judges don't cash their checks.
Who did?
Well, I don't know, I mean, that's, we've, you always had some of them in the past that if their judge is there, I couldn't tell you whether or not they're gonna cash them or not.
Well, that's a check written out on the account, in my opinion, you don't, you don't let it go to the hole or you get an MSF by accident, I think you just give them the to zero it out to make sure that everything's covered.
Do you want to wait until we get ourselves together from the case of law on that, so we can do it through one, one deal and have it done? That's up to the board.
If any of those go negative though, we're gonna get an MSF.
Do you think she's gonna ask us to do a bill then?
Well, she, when I jumped, well, actually, when I talked to her at the Pizza Barn in the night, she said she sent me the penny dollars. We'll get to see them later. And Billy texted her, I believe, three days ago.
Yeah, Thursday.
And he hasn't heard anything back, I mean, we'll eventually get it, it's just, we have no idea what it is.
My fear is a thirty dollar MSF.
Yeah.
For a hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Yep, and that's where we're at with this, the lodging step, now, I, I do have the lodging in here, I have the lodging taxes, squares everything up. Most of that's penalty, it ain't, it ain't the fee for the taxes, the, the lodging tax is, is the fee. And then our, our license was suspended, and so I got the application on that, and that's all ready to go too. That, that money's in here, you know, posthumous steps we're pretty much retaining about.
I would do my motion to get them that hundred and twenty-two, fifty-five with the understanding that we will still have one invoice expected in the Pizza Barn that will have to be paid when it comes in. Second.
Okay, we have a little more thing here, that, that is, that's assuming that the hundred and sixteen out of the computers, everything sense to sense now. I mean, outside that, that's the only one we have, there's a lot of checks here.
We have motion profit second to take a hundred and twenty-two dollars, fifty-five cents out of financial admin transfer to the fairgrounds to zero out their account with knowing that it will prob, there could possibly be a, one more bill showing up from Pizza Barn.
I would like to do a review today because this is a separate test.
I'm assuming the petition, just in case, we want to, please.
Is that amendment to your motion?
Yes, please.
Does that can do with the amendment?
Yeah.
That amendment, profit second amended to do the hundred and twenty-two dollars, fifty-five cents as prepaid today to make sure that we avoid any. For any other discussion?
During that, all the big, please say aye.
Aye.
All the folks in aye.
Okay, then one, one other question. Um, we have been given permission to write, use a credit card to do a printer, thought about that. Susan, by accident, put it on her credit card, and she's never been paid, we got the printer, it's working awesome and everything like that, but she's never paid with the printer. How should I put this in?
Send a thank you card.
That's what she said, I know, she says she'll, she'll, she'll delete. But that, this is what her check, check was right here, but we didn't, yeah. I'm assuming the Adobe subscription was taken care of, I don't think the solar panels, we won't be able to. Yeah.
What, what was this for?
A new printer.
The printer. Right, and. And the future that should come out of your budget.
Well, yeah. That, that's what I, that's everything. This goes to Susan, so I would just.
Well, and I get that. I'm just saying, if it wasn't in the budget, if I.
We'll put it in our voucher and we'll go from there.
Lord, we wanna do a voucher right to Susan, the cleaner and printer that way.
I think so too.
Then, what do we count them to? What's for you?
No, Susan will have her.
Yeah, Susan, right. But then, then we could take that away, you know. Okay.
I'll make, I wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion for Susan to fill out a voucher and get paid through the voucher system for six hundred and three dollars and ninety-nine cents for a printer for the fair.
A second.
We have a motion, property second to deduct Susan and off her shirt to fill out a voucher for six hundred and nine dollars and thirty-three cent.
Six hundred and three dollars and ninety-nine.
Six oh three ninety-nine. To get her reimbursed with the printer, she actually, she put on her credit card for the fair.
Please, please say sorry for the delay, we didn't have that happen.
And I, I also didn't either. I mean, I never say anything, but I thought it was taken care of.
Again, it's a budget issue that really should have been.
No, why?
During the other discussion. Your motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the folks say nay.
Let's carry. You still have us on, if you guys find a good computer, right? We're not using our desktop. And, you know, we're still kinda, since everything went down, we don't use it. Of course, right now, we're locked out of Word and Excel and all that because the owner was, Kara had her name on it, so we didn't put a computer up.
So, can't they come and fix them?
Is it our computer or is it Kara's?
It's our, it's our computer. It's an old.
A usual question, with this being done, can they go back to using their equipment? I mean, their computers or whatnot, or are you, anything against them doing that?
It's involving.
Kara's computer that's locked.
County's computer, it's the county's computer that Kara basically put in as the owner of it.
We still got stuff in it we don't wanna get into.
Well, that's.
Well, there's still the. Matter pending.
Is there another computer somewhere that could use, well, I told them to have a laptop because they didn't want a laptop.
We have an old laptop, but it's, nothing's that big. As long as people, we do have old laptops, we are.
We can preserve that whatever is on there separately.
Well, if they're gonna use it, there's a risk we wouldn't. So if you want that, I don't even know where we're at. So, but if you have a computer that we bought and can't use, that's an issue.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to properly preserve whatever might be associated with that. And then if that's preserved separately, I think we can use it.
Didn't we take, or didn't we do research to have that stuff pulled off? I mean, has that not been touched?
I know we have a lot of stuff preserved. I don't know if everything, I mean, I don't, I just don't know.
But we have Charles look at that and possibly download all the information onto a, a, an external hard drive to preserve it so they could, so we could clear the computer for their use.
I know there's stuff that shouldn't be on because it can be actually.
You could just, and then they would be, would they be part of the three sixty-five then? And they would have those programs.
I don't think they are now because they're not on the.
Oh.
Oh.
Cause everything Kara had was had her name on it and it's locked.
Okay.
Whereas we can't get into it with the way it wasn't there.
Can you make a motion to, is that just administrative? Did we get a hold of, we asked you to get a hold of Charles to possibly do that?
When Charles is here, you can basically download whatever's on it, wipe it clean.
Wipe it clean so you can use it.
Cause I was told that the little hard drive that's beside our computer has stuff on it. But it's also, in the same sense, they said, but it's still on this one.
So Charles.
But I don't know where you're at with that, that's all I'm asking.
And I appreciate you being there, but there should be some timeframe. You shouldn't just put a computer on the desk and say, oh, well, I'm just not gonna use it anymore.
No, I agree. I mean, that's just where we're at. We just didn't use it 'cause of the situation.
Thank you.
Any questions for us? But, okay.
Appreciate you being here today.
Okay, we wanna talk about your reading.
Really appreciate it.
You guys are really, both of you guys, it's, glad to still have you on there. And there is a person that was interested that I wanna give their name to. My bit will be later, I'm gonna call him and I told him that he needs to reach out to.
Yeah.
Today you guys wrote a check for a hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Our fair budget was ten grand. You guys got off scot-free for a hundred and twenty-two dollars to put on the fair. Most of these deposits are donations for community. The citizens of this county and organizations, they put on their twenty, twenty-three cents. Pretty cheap.
We are blessed with our, the locals support that our county gets.
Yep. And if, in the future, if we can take that money and put it for something to grow our fair, then you guys pay the premiums, you guys pay the judges, the citizens of the county pay the judges. You guys do anything. Fair could be amazing. It was a good fair this year. It would be so much more if that, what we have called in the past fun money, go to fun activities. That's my two cents about that.
Can I ask a little more question? So you guys said that the money rolls over into next year. This ten thousand you guys have goes in for next year's fair.
Is that legal?
Well, I would, I guess that'd be up to Mr. Spelman here. But anyhow, just assuming that. So be aware also that that checking account is probably gonna get, we don't have the money in it, we're gonna get charged, I'm assuming on a monthly basis also.
My question to you is, is what is it that you would like the commission to do? So I understand completely what you're asking. And you said, this, we've talked about this fund line before. So what is it that you would like the county commission to do for the fair? So that it's on the table. Give us a checkbook back. Let us fair bills. Let us manage the facility. Let us manage fairs. So right now, I mean, we can't do anything without coming to you guys. And right now, I mean, we have a two-man committee to this. Which I didn't do a two-man committee for too long. Well, for one, the, the, the board has to, that, that might be a solution. I, I don't know. We've tried about twenty different things since I've been on the board. Um, but I also think that we have to remember legally, when you talk about legally, we can't, you guys don't have a board. So it falls back on the commission's lap to figure it out, which is why we zeroed it out, which is what I thought you guys were asking us to do last time. And honestly, it's confusing. We're trying to help, and then there's frustration because we're not doing enough. But I would remind the fair board that we also spent a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars last year in repairs on the fairgrounds. We're trying to do as much as we can, and we know you guys are too, but, um. So now we're zeroed out with a fresh ten thousand, which is what, David, you brought to the board last time, saying if we could just get this caught back up, which is what we're trying to do. We're open for any, or at least I'm open for any ideas to improve the fair because the, the community does a whole lot. And it could be a lot better. It's a frustration for everybody. Um, but we are working under limited funds. Uh, our budget this year, we, we've been warning people for two years that it's gonna get tight. Um, so we shouldn't be spending fair money to repair roofs. We should be using county money. We have to use the budget the way it's supposed to work so that we can effectively get this thing going. And that's been the problem. I'm not saying you guys are at fault, 'cause you're not. You guys bust your butt. But we've had these issues ongoing for several years on, you know, spreadsheets and using Excel formats. This is great, but we have somebody that can, this, this helps, but we need a, maybe we need to give you guys an accounting system or something so that, um, we're all on the same page. It's, it's not because we don't wanna help. It's not. It's because we have guidelines that we have to follow for a budget too. And we have to follow those rules. So I appreciate what you're saying, and I, you know, maybe that's a possibility. Uh, we changed it because of the issues we were having. And hopefully those issues are resolved with new people coming in. But I'm not exactly sure what you want us to do. We can't just go here for a checkbook and do, do what you gotta do. We can't do that.
And part of the reason going to the vouchers is the way that the council's set up. Becky can give out, you're basically like your department, a printout every month of where your, each one of your budgets are at, where you're over budget, where you're under budget. The way it was going, your, the tracking system was not very good, so.
And I think we understand what Becky needs. I mean, I, they called me, I filled out the office. I think we're, we're, we're on, what she's asking for, I think we're good. Um, I disagree on the ten thousand because if you remember back a ways, we talked about how we, how you guys said you came in in two thousand and twenty, twenty-two when you came to a meeting. Now, that, that, that fair account, we call it a fair account, used to be an obligated account. We used to put in our, our deposits for our stalls or for our concession, for our open class building when we rented it, our three hundred dollar deposit. Now, in two twenty-two, I was gonna look at that, didn't have very much money in it. It didn't have much at all. Then we came to the twenty-two meeting in, in June or July, saying, hey, we don't have nothing to put fair on. Now, this is the way it's been for years, and this is the same thing I talked about before. We always come in and say, hey, we gotta have our budget money, which comes out the end of July to put on our fair. Well, then, I was told that what we did last year rolled in for this year. Vera made it real clear that we skipped a fair. The fair we put on, we thought that the money you gave us was for that, 'cause that's the way it's always been. And I, I made a statement, okay, so we're gonna pay for it every year. And, and I was told, yes, that's what we're gonna do. We never addressed the part for the fair. I mean, when, when I talked about it, the, the fun account, or you wanna call it, we talked about it, well, we'll pay for the fair stuff. I know what we need for the fair. We'll get the fair, fair paid off. We'll still have that money here, but you gotta take that, that entertainment stuff and get rid of it the next year. And I came to the next meeting, and it was kinda like, nobody to zero it out. And my statement was, just let me know what you wanna do. We will do it. You guys elected to, to zero the account out, and that's what we did. I never agreed that to zero the account out, 'cause I still feel very strongly on the entertainment account. And just kinda like, well, it's our money. That's what you were saying. We are part of you guys. We ain't gonna rip you off or anything like that, 'cause we don't have much money in there. But just to be clear, I never once said I was agreeable to zero the account out. That's what you guys decided the last time I was in here for a meeting. And that's what we're going forward, you know, at, at that's fun. That's what you guys decide to do, we're gonna do it. We did it.
On the fun money that you were talking about, the only thing we said was, is that sponsored money from Friends of the Fair and those type of things, when they come in, that should, if, you need to let Friends of the Fair, those donations go to Friends of the Fair, then you guys can do whatever you want with that money. But when it comes into the budget, there has to be a budget amendment, there has to be an adjustment, and that's not our rule.
Okay. I understand that.
So if they sponsor these jumpy cages and all that, use that money for fun money. Use the sponsorship. It's, it's no different than RPM days. We go around to the different places and say, hey, will you sponsor the mud drags? Will you sponsor this? Yes, we'll do that. That money's donated by them. It's not in our budget.
Right.
Um, and that's all we're trying to tell you. You were using Fairgrounds money to rip, what, eighteen thousand dollars to repair a roof, which should have come out of different funds, and we would have happily paid that. But we have to explain it just like you guys do. We have to answer for this.
We're fine. I mean, that's, that's right.
That's all we were saying.
So our deposit, our, our, like our deposit for our stalls and our, uh, we, we, we charge like a three hundred dollar deposit on the, on the event center. We bring that money in. Are we supposed to bring it back to you guys? You guys write a check back out for those people?
Well, that needs to be discussed. So at the end of the budget, they need to show that they're making money instead of losing money.
That's why I wanted you.
Right. We have yet to show that they're making money.
They never will make money. I mean, I've said it after the bridge, yeah, that fairgrounds.
The board told you to bridge it first.
Right, and that's what we got here. That's what we're working on.
Right.
That's what we're working on. And then, and, and this here, we wanna work together. We need to get it done and go forward.
We want you guys to have an awesome fair. Don't get that wrong at all. We're just trying to, the checks and balances are there, and we have a budget that we have to follow too.
I have a question. So the money to make on stall rentals and whatnot, can that go into their checking account?
That's, that is in their budgeted amount, so that should come back into their account, and then the bill's paid out of that account. That is, that's the, by doing it with the vouchers like we do, that gives the accounting system that tracking. So you can see, okay, stalls, stall rents, we're paying this into the maintenance of the stalls, but we're not making this. So it's in the red. So we need to ju, you know, rate, change rates or whatever needs to get that in account. The event center, that line item over here, we're putting all this utilities into it, and we're getting this little bit of money coming in for rent. Okay, that's gonna be in the red. So we need to, it's, it's the tracking system of the accounting system that Becky has, that we, the county uses. It's the, the tracking system that makes it so nice, 'cause you can just, every month, she can print that report, and you go right over on the right-hand side. Amount remaining, if you're under budget, over budget, and where it's at.
So I.
We've always done it that way.
I'm assuming something here, okay, so bear with me.
We've always done it that way because it's, it's like they say, we show, we, we have a line item when we do our, our budget. What do we estimate we're gonna bring in for the year? And, and, and we break it down by, by stall. Well, I don't even think we do that. I think we just say we're gonna bring in X amount of dollars.
So we have ten thousand dollars set aside for fair for next summer. That was part of our, our budgeting, correct? Is that, so that stays as a line item? Can they use some of that to have in their checking account for minor things they need going forward? To get ready for fair?
If it's for the fair.
If it's for the fair.
That's, 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 we, we're trying to differentiate the, the fair from the fairgrounds. You know, that's, we want the fairgrounds, whether it makes money or not, I mean, as long as it's close, but if it's a money pit that we're just keep dumping into, we got constituents who are like, why are we dumping that much money there? But if it's close, that's the tracking system of it is close, we can see where we're at. Gives us a good idea of where the money's going, where it's coming from. So, and, but like the fair, that, that ten thousand, that is, that's for your fair.
So we can start in January, whatever, we start buying our.
If it's for the fair, then, and it's going to that. But I mean, if you're using ten thousand dollars to fix.
Nope.
Uh, a lawnmower, and you had to fix the lawnmower, I'm not saying it doesn't mean fixed, and then it costs five hundred dollars, then you have nine thousand five hundred dollars to go towards the fair. It didn't go towards the fair. You could say, well, I had them on the grass during the fair. But if the races come in and the races cost you five hundred dollars to run the lights and do all the ground work and dump the trash, and you only bring in four hundred dollars, you're now negative in your budget. You didn't make that money.
Well, I agree. I understand what you're saying.
We're just trying to say break even or a little bit above, and that goes into your budget. It goes into your line item account, and then those things will start to happen. I've talked to a lot of, a few, I guess, uh, other fair board members, people who've been associated with the, uh, and outside of Western. And most of them agree to the statement that a successful fairgrounds does not break even on their gate fees and their facility. What they bring, a successful fairgrounds, what they bring to the table, it, I mean, there's not a place, I think I've mentioned it here before, there's not a place in this county that can match the potential that a successful fairgrounds has for generating revenue with your gas stations, your hotels, your restaurants, your beer stores, your grocery stores. Um, like when I, when I came on to here, this board, that's what I envisioned I'm doing, was getting it to where there's multiple big events. No, we're never gonna build a complex and have host of the high school, national piles. Um, like this is not, that's not the case. But like to bring in some big events, um, bring in two hundred trucks and pickup and trailers. I mean, not everyone's got a drag tank. They're gonna go to your gas stations. They're gonna buy beer, they're gonna buy groceries. They're gonna, um, you put a three-day event on, they're gonna spend some money in this town. Other than that, I mean. Um, I may, might even set it for, I mean, like Sundance, Winter Festival, one day, the, the revenue that's generated.
The revenue that's generated that one day, you can't walk down the street, the sidewalk, it looks crazy. And that's where, uh, successful fairgrounds, um, even see the, the benefit. But that's, that's what I'm pushing for. So like, you know, talking about break even, it's hard to, to look at that, um, a line item.
But like, on that, we're not that it needs to be making money, but it's like, where, where the downfall is or what's, what needs attention, like where we're, where we're dumping the money into and where it's coming from, you know? Like, hey, you know, let's use a campground, like look at camps, like maybe this is making us money, maybe an extra 10 more spots. Or it's like, we're losing our butt on that side of it, maybe we oughta not do that, you know? Just get cleared back out of it, you know? It gives you that tracking system of knowing what looks more profitable than others. I mean, we all know the fairgrounds not gonna be a multimillion dollar, making money, but as long as we have a good facility, puts fair on and brings people in, that's the main, because it's the, the secondary money that goes into the businesses around town that come in. But it's just, it's the tracking system.
Things to consider as well, um, some of the revenues that were brought into the fairgrounds. I was looking, um, David said, help us prioritize some of these things that we need. And what I'm thinking is dollars. As a commissioner, I'm thinking, okay, um, some of the larger items that are bringing in most monies are the event center. And that was, that was just on a sheet that we signed today. And if we've got a kitchen door that needs attention and it might, it might, uh, shut down the, the possibilities of being able to utilize that to the public, uh, that's something that should be bumped up to the, the priority line, making sure that that, that heavy hitter is, um, continuing to generate the revenue that, that we're needing. Um, looking at it that way, obviously all of the things need done on the list, but on a priority side, that's how I would be looking at it.
Up your $10,000 account for your, the fare. I don't know if we, as commissioners, we need it every month broken down, but our, our auditors probably will ask. You know, let's see in that account, where, to make sure everything is being viewed properly. You know, because every year we have auditors crawling. They're in this room and they go over everything to the penny. I mean, they make Becky's side match Susan's side to the penny. So that's something where, you know, the fairgrounds is an arm of the county. If they ask for that, if the auditors ask for that, we have to give it to them, you know? We have to be able to produce it accurately to them. That's something you guys wanna remember, when you're, when you're in that account, you know? That it's tracked accurately and precise.
I'll be here this morning.
Yeah. Anything else for the fair board?
I think you were asked, it's, when you said it's on agenda about the new board members. If that's, you know.
Yeah, for like, that's. We have old business and that's the first thing on new business, or secondly, on new business.
Thank you guys for all that you do. You're doing a lot. Thank you for the, the trouble times now too.
So if we get some applicants next week, we don't have a board member forum. Are you guys willing to, wanna sit on the interviews? We set on the inter, we do the interview amongst us and pass on to you guys for the recommendation?
I guess I would feel comfortable, you guys do the interviews and pass the recommendation to us. We can make that decision, you know? We don't wanna, we don't wanna solve the process or sit on it, but yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Because if you have interviews next week and two weeks, we have another meeting, we can, you know, move them right on forward.
Okay.
But thank you guys. Thank you guys. Next is old business, the rental agreement between Dan Exlon of Southern Law Office.
So we all got a letter and I'm trying to make a little bit, I wanna understand it better. And I don't, I don't know if Michael's aware of it or not, but the letter, is that letter incorrect that we got or is it correct?
What letter?
The letter that we got from the honor about the.
It's incorrect.
The county attorney is, well, one part of it isn't. And, and the part that isn't is, um, there's, if there is space provided by the county, the county attorney cannot just decide, I don't want it and go somewhere else and put as much money into a building and we have to pay for it. That part is correct. I did some checking on my own.
It's not statute that the county provide a place for the attorney.
Right.
That's the, right, that part is correct. And I just, it was important that, because we were being told, yep, last week, that we're, yes, they can go out into the county and we'd have to provide that. I just wanna make sure we're making decisions based on fact and not meant.
Yeah, the statute says the county has to provide space.
Right. But it does not say you can go out and go, you know, pick up the motel and I need all this space and it's a certain amount. It is limited and it's within reason. From what I was told, um, and I got it from a pretty good source, that, uh, that it's not just an open checkbook for the county attorney. And that was kind of the way we were led, that he can go and save, spend all this money and then here we are. So that's not a true thing. So that's really what the discussion was about and I just wanted to make sure we were all in agreement about that, because it just didn't sit well with, you know, we have to do this and we're lucky because the attorney could spend unlimited dollars for space, that, that's not true. And that's not a put down of you, I just.
No, no.
That's what we were told last week, is they, we're lucky for that.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that. Yeah, the statute does say the county has to provide space for county attorney, the public defender's office.
Right. The key word is within reason.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I had for the discussion. I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page there. I don't know if any of the other commissioners wanna bring anything up about that or not.
I just wanted to make sure that, I think we haven't had it cleared up or at least verified at the last, um, meeting. Uh, it was initially moved as a $400 leasing space for the area. And then it was moved, I believe, to $600 at last meeting. Is that correct? Is that, is that something?
No, I think you were asking him if he would be agreeing to that.
Oh, you had to give him some answers and I just asked if he would.
That's what we were, that's what we're gonna revisit today. If there's any other concerns, um, I don't.
There you go.
I don't feel very emotional.
Again, I, again, like I've had nothing but positive feedback. I know there's some concerns about the co-mingling and I understand that. And if you guys need some policies or something to make sure that there's no co-mingling. I can do that for you guys if there's no way I'm gonna use public funds for private.
Right.
No way.
I don't think your character would probably, uh, you probably wouldn't, but obviously we're gonna need something a, a little bit more solid to base off of.
Um, at, at the training that Ed and I went to and Becky went to last week, um, about financial, the financial training, the risk, risk training, it was brought up that we should have a contract with Michael, um, even though, you know, we, we give him a salary and everybody agrees, we actually should have a contract in place with that on there, probably every four years. And, um, if we're going to be doing that, I guess I'm, maybe I would suggest as part of that contract, we could have some policy in that contract regarding this, that if he does anything in his personal practice in that area, you know, that there's a certain separation. Perhaps we could put that in our contracts.
Be considered, you know, for that, just to spell it out in the contract.
As a policy, yeah.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, and I agree with Commissioner Board that there's nothing that would say that you're gonna do any of that. But I think if you look, part of the problem, in my opinion, that we've had in the past is, is, is contracts. I mean, expired contracts, contracts with no teeth, things that have bitten us before. And not saying that it will with you, but this is a way that we're all protected and we're all.
Yeah.
And, and whether, I, we get 50% of the people that say, I hate this decision. We get 50% of the people that say, I, this is a good decision. Well, this kind of meets in the middle and says, yes, we did this and this is how we did it. And it's, it's in a contract. And I think that's where we have been burned, I mean, three examples right off the deck here. We've been burned on exactly that stuff. And then we're questioned why we didn't have a contract and why we didn't handle it that way. Um, so I just don't want you to think for five minutes that you believe that, oh, Michael's gonna steal from the gang.
No, I get that, I just, yeah, and those are old contracts.
They were, but I'm saying they have bitten us. So let's, let's eliminate that issue in the future by moving forward, by doing the things that we're supposed to do.
It sounded like contracts should be put almost every county official.
Yes.
Just so it's clear on both sides, but that's a different discussion.
Yeah, that's some of the policies that, the questionable mandate, the training that we had to take now. There's, whether it's legal or not, even mandate, we have to do this though. That was another discussion.
The legislator didn't have to.
Yeah.
Yes.
Elected officials have to do it, but legislators don't. That was interesting.
So did we decide the 400 or the 600?
Well, that's, that's what we're gonna discuss. I was just thinking about it, you know, and you, go both ways. Using less space and focus is really, I don't know. I really don't have a heartburn either way, so, but I would prefer, just because I, I'm, I'm using substantially less, well, less space than, well, it's called Newark now, than, than they are. Just have my assistant Janelle in that room and I'm using part of another room and that's it. So I thought the original 400 was fair, but if, but if you guys have, we can discuss.
Do we, I, I brought this up on the first side of it and I know that Nathan said that, uh, that we'd already gone down through it. So we're, we're still kind of basing it off of generalities. Do we have like a set square footage that you're going to be using for your personal practice? I know you were talking a quarter of the, like a conference room and whatnot, but, um, we kinda need a square footage. Like we're, we're just kind of hip-shooting it here. So if we're gonna, um, do it proper, let's get a square footage down and develop a contract that is appropriate for both sides, protected of the county and also, uh, your business and yourself. So that's kinda, I think we need that. Do we have a square footage?
Uh, it's hard to parse out a quarter of the.
Well, right.
But, um, you saw, I think you came in and looked at the rooms, Janelle was in, what'd you say that's?
I was just roundabout and I mean, I can reach like a little over six feet. So I mean, I was trying to kind of put it, again, hip-shooting.
20 by.
15, something like that?
The room's 20 by 15, you know? Part of that other room is maybe, I don't know, 6 by, 6 by 10? At the most?
Okay.
I'm sure it's 60 square feet.
Do you feel that 600 a month for your personal is too high to pay?
I think for this, my personal opinion, I think that the space being used is too high.
What if we split the difference?
I can look at that.
I have a dedication for. Any of both parties are in agreement for the, to do it at 500 a month? Get the contract drawn up and get that amount in there?
Yeah, and again, it's month to month, so it's, you can do it at any time, basically. And I think that benefits you guys a lot more.
Just a personal opinion, I think, I think the 600 is extremely reasonable, just going off of what, um, office space is. Um, obviously, it's a little bit harder to, um, did some research on it. It's hard to get a, a solid dollar amount maybe in Newcastle only, but trying to get our region and some other areas, um, this is well below, um, approximate square footage at 600 a month for what the, the office space goes for.
And I, I can agree with that in other spaces, but Newcastle's an interesting creature when it comes to that, because there's no office spaces.
Right.
Really.
Look, let's talk about this just for fun, just for a second. We're talking 600 and this is out the door, or whatever amount we agree on. Heating, cooling, all of that included with that price, correct?
Right.
Okay. That's, that's pretty reasonable with, without any utilities or, or whatnot, because there's going to be, um, specifics that will be, um, directed, you know, like your phone line, like we talked about. But, um, your, your office doesn't have its own heating unit or, um, obviously the bathrooms are shared throughout the whole deal. If the bathroom breaks, the county's gonna pay for it. You see what I'm saying? There's a lot of advantages to your personal business. I would love to have an office space for 600 bucks a month with those type of amenities. Um, I think that, uh, I think that's extremely reasonable, just in a personal opinion.
One, one thing we have to keep in mind is, like I say, the sensitivity of the building. You know, we can't, we can't throw wine and gaming or the cowboy skills in there or something, you know? Or a vape shop, something like that. You know, that's something, we gotta be careful on, of, of who we rent it to, because there's confidentiality, exact, you know, things. That's one we need to keep in mind. So how does the board want to direct Michael to draw up the contract with what dollar amount?
Um, I'm gonna have to agree with Garrett on the 600. Yes, I understand that we can't just let anyone in there, but on the other side, it's also very convenient for you. And so the convenience for you is worth something on your side. And it's, you know, it's gonna be a win-win for both sides. But I know it's hard to find office space here, I know that. And, uh, I think that 600 is probably there.
Stand up, what do we, what do we direct Michael to do?
He's gotta make a motion.
I move that we approve Michael to rent that portion, those square footages, which are decently unknown at this moment, um, for the $600 a month, based on a monthly raise for his personal practice.
Second. The motion for proper section to direct Michael to draw up the contract between the private attorney business and the county in the annex for $600 a month rent for the office space described, we're discussing. We're gonna do the discussion. Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All of us both say nay? Nay? Motion cleared.
Fair enough, and I haven't, uh, it's only a third, I haven't paid a rent this month yet, because I didn't know what you guys' decision would be, so I just bring, October's 600 today. So we'll start this. If that works.
Since the sheriff's here, could you bring me this all back? Question for the auditor. Is that what you're here for? These are, I don't know, but it's all we know, so maybe we can get an answer right away.
Well, I'll probably move forward and catch him on the end.
Okay.
Next, and our old business is training.
Well, I mentioned a little bit earlier about our training that we went to, um, that there's still a lot of questions about. But my understanding is any special districts or people that work with training from the state are gonna have to have that training by next June at this point, unless they, they change that. There was a lot of question about how people are going to get that training, because it doesn't seem like they're going to offer it. It's quite confusing. People suggested they, they try to get something online for people to, to do. But my concern is, um, like, like the board training, w- we need a way to, to record that and to keep track of our boards, if they have the training that is needed by statute. And then this additional training. And then this additional training is going to be, has to be recorded some and kept track of. Along with a lot of other things, I, I would like you to be thinking, I know our budget's tight. But I'm thinking perhaps we could find a HR person who would be willing to contract, to set up a system for us. To start tracking some of this training, to get us going in the right direction. To make sure that we're doing what we need to do by state law. Because all these boards are gonna have to have that training, the, the board training. And then possibly this training. Or how, or other ideas as to how we can track that in a way that we can go forward and be able to make sure year by year, everyone has it.
My take on part of that was is we may be trying to assume too much responsibility for us. That should be coming, those boards should be doing that on their own. Their audits, their tracking on their bookkeeping end of it should be keeping track of that. The audit departments should be re, if, if they're out of compliance, the audit department should be coming back to us as commissioners. Saying this board is not following their compliances, then we have a way to deal with it. I mean, us, us tracking it, I don't, I don't know if that's gonna be our responsibility to track it. I mean, that should be, my feeling is this should be the audit department's tracking that audits those boards.
I think there's, should be a distinction between which boards are under the direct control of you guys and which ones are separate. So it's like, like the fair is directly under, you have an airport, I believe it's directly under you guys. So that's different than the separate ones.
And, and for that reason, we need to, I feel like we need to get all that stuff straight. And the, I understand the volunteer boards are, are treated a little differently. And most, some of them may not need the risk training, but they still need board training. And, you know, our, what I got out of our, our meeting was it is our responsibility to do oversight for our volunteer boards. It is our responsibility to do that.
I can comment on that, but hail ready, I'm with Weston County, we've been passed, I guess is what, I'll associate myself with this discussion. But I'm, and also I'm on the LGLP board, reliability and transport. But the fiscal training and everything that I think is what you're kind of kidnapping, the requirements and stuff. That is tracked through the auditor's office. On F32 forums, there's, starting this year on the back page, it's, you have a list what your trainings are.
Is it our, is it our responsibility to, to get the word out though that they need to do it?
Department of law has been pretty, pretty good about it.
But it is our, it is our responsibility for volunteer boards, their board training.
But I mean, every volunteer board should be on that 32.
Yeah, every, every board we have is volunteer.
Right, right.
So, so I mean, even, I mean, it goes down to the Weeden Pest Board, the Airport, Malo Board. Every water district board that's out here, their special district, Airport Board. They're all filed, they have 32s, American State, the state nets in that requirement. And if they fail to have that completed by, uh, current sitting boards by, so June 30th to 24th. Department of law, it would come back to you guys and tell you to withhold their funds until it's cracked. Or that board member that's not been trained should resign or be relocated. Yeah, but it falls on us to get our, our board members trained. So I mean, there's one here in a couple of weeks that's online, it's ridiculously long. But um, you know, coming back to the, the boards that are directly, volunteer boards that are directly under you, you know, like the fair board and stuff. It's especially under you, the guys of your 12 mils, you know, and so point you guys too, that are, have to do it. I mean. David and Billy, you know, in their case, they've got to take days off work. You know, on your end, maybe you make it financially beneficial, beneficial to them. I mean, as, you know, paying for being for the day or something. You know, that way it kind of lessens the heartache on them. I mean, I know my board, I mean, we're, I'm asking them to come in and spend nine hours in my office to complete the training on it from the 40. But I mean, well, we're buying them lunch, we're making it as least hardship on them as we can out of this day of work. Cause I mean, they have to take a vacation, they didn't come do this. And so that's just my two cents on it. In the end, I think it's a good that our boards are getting trained, they need it. But we have to make it at least impactful on them and their personal lives. They're taking kind of their personal lives to volunteer. I mean, my board for example, board meetings usually last one to two hours, you know, but they come in and say, hey, I need to spend nine hours in here.
So what you're saying is we don't have to worry about tracking, which I really appreciate your information.
Yeah, the Department of law is gonna track it.
But perhaps we should look at other ways we can help make sure that it gets done and it's not a, not a hardship for, for people to do.
I think that, um, part of the, we've received letters. Um, this is a different type of tracking, but it still goes, falls into the training. We've received letters from board members before that have said, one of the reasons why I'm quitting is because I was put on a board and no one told me that there was training available. I didn't know what I was doing. I wasn't told. Now, yeah, you could say that while you're on the volunteer board, they're not getting paid. But you just said the first word, you volunteered for the position. So there's a responsibility, I get that, for them to figure out what they're volunteering for.
Yeah.
But I, we have run into before, I say it again, we've run into this problem before where there's a difference between proactive. And just waiting till a problem happens and then we deal with the problem. So the ones that the board is responsible for, um, and we are ultimately responsible for those boards. And we'll have to answer for it if there's a failure there. I see your point. At the same token, I don't, I am for an HR person, however, I think it'd be very difficult to find an HR person at a part-time rate. That's gonna stay and, and do these things part-time. Most of them are looking at it full-time and I don't know that we're, we're there yet. We don't even, frankly, haven't seen a handbook that we'd pay $20,000 for yet. So I don't know that we, we're in a position, I would love to see an HR person get here. But I don't, I don't know that we're ready for that in that regard, unless we can give them full-time work. Or who are we gonna get that, that would work occasionally? Maybe there would be someone, maybe there wouldn't, but. I think there definitely needs to be some type of oversight by the commission, not because we're the commission and we need to oversight. It's because we're gonna deal with the problems if they happen, if it doesn't happen. That's my, that's my two cents on that.
Oh, go ahead.
I was, have we done any stimulant training in the past as far as that goes? Like Neil was bringing up on, um, we're asking, we are asking these people to volunteer for these boards. And to ask them to take a day off of work or two or whatever, to go down and receive the proper training. That we would like to see them performing in the board with. That might be kind of a lot to ask out of a volunteer. Um, I don't know if we, have, for one, have we ever had a, an entity be withheld, asked to be withheld funding?
Well, the legislature actually required that, so we're not requiring that.
Right, well.
I don't know.
But we haven't gotten contacted by the auditors saying withhold, withhold funding to this board.
Yeah, we've, we've had them threaten letters or not.
I get it all the, I get it all the time.
You get them all the time.
Actually, the one I just bought, it, it's, it had a new code. Cause I haven't looked it up and it's because they haven't had the training yet.
Okay.
Yep, so I'm already getting, I'm saying.
Which is odd that you're getting those now because the.
I know, it's not even required yet. That's why.
For like a year.
Cause I usually get the F32s and I know that one, but it had the, it's really weird once I haven't looked it up and it's the non-compliant on the training.
I believe that that structure is the proper one as well. That way those boards are brought aware of what they are in need of. But ultimately, the county benefiting from their, their good or bad business as a board.
And I have a list, cause Brenda from the library, they offered it online before we took ours in Casper. And she hosted it for the people to come in and there were a lot of boards that took advantage of that. All of the board members need to be trained on it, but I, and she was nice enough to send you the list. So I can get it to you guys and let you know tools and stuff.
Is that training, is that free of charge to the volunteers?
Yes.
I have a question, why aren't we getting that information? Because we have a lot of board members that call us individually about these things. And if we're not getting that information to me, uh, this is the first I've heard that.
I didn't send it, Brenda sent it.
But she sent it to you.
She sent me the list after the class.
So if you get any information like that, I, I would appreciate, I'm sure everybody would appreciate if we get that information. Because we do get a lot of calls from board members regarding these things. And if we don't have the information to give them, I mean, we, we have to work together on this. It's a whole new thing. I think we all are trying to figure out what's going on. But my suggestion for trying to find somebody, I know, I know it's a big iffy. But to maybe spend a little money for somebody who knows what they're doing to set up a system for us. Then perhaps we can run it through the attorney's office or whatever, going forward. I mean, we have other training we need to do, like sexual harassment training and whatnot. That needs to be recorded and kept track of and renewed occasionally. If we had a system set up by someone who, you know, with that experience, in the long run, it might save us money. And it might take care of a lot of these problems that we have all at once for, for just a little while anyway. It might be advantageous to us to think about that. As far as the handbook goes, just a caveat, um, I have talked to Jeannie. And I will put it on the agenda for next time, if we have time, to approve the handbook and go forward with it.
You know, like Hale said, you know, buying lunch to these guys, that's up to the individual boards. And I would encourage, if, if your board does that, you know, buy lunch for your people, whatever, because they're donating. But that's up to each individual board to do that. And I don't, I wouldn't have a problem with any board doing it, getting their members trained and helping them out like that, that's.
Well, how would the fair board, for example, do that? With the, with the money situation, that's what I'm saying there.
That part is, that's something, I mean, do it, come to us and we'll decide to pay it or not. But I, I would definitely not deny the fair board.
Be them personally, they'd have to almost take it out of their own pocket.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so in that situation, they'd have to buy themselves a.
Yeah, and just, and they gas reimburse them, things like that. Then with a solid base board, I think, I think two or three of them took it at the library a while back. So it was, and they're, I know the WCCA is working on trying to get that training available for people too. My fear right now is we don't want to jump, jump the gun and get something in place that six months, seven months. Now the later state will say, yeah, maybe we don't need any of that. And then we've already got things going, but there's still too many uncertainties right now. I feel that a lot of this is, it's still up in the air. If it moves forward, everybody's gonna have to do the training.
Mr. Chairman, I just, um, you know, I have to reach through board members, my board every few years, but. And it might be something when you advertise board positions it, in the advertising, you say you must, you know, if you're appointed to these boards, you have one year to complete this training. And it's one of them that, once you've done it once, you're done.
You're good.
You're good forever, but, and, and the nice thing about it is it goes across all boards at this level, so.
Well, you serve like two boards, one training covers both.
Covers both, you know, or I serve on, I guess right now I'm not on any local boards. But I mean, I'm on, on LGLP, my private board, which is statewide board and stuff. Might, but I have to have it for my Weeden Pest, probably, but it covers after the LGLP.
Anything else on the training?
And when we make a public records request and are told by a, a county clerk that, that they have to retrieve it from the vault. And it's gonna take 30 days, that's, that absolutely should never, ever be said to anybody.
Right, and why does it take however long to get the minutes put up on there so people can actually see the minutes? When in today's technology, it's as quick as, you know, you, you copy it, you paste it on there and you're done. It, it's really, the, the update of our website, there's a lot of things that we, and I, I said it in the city council meeting just a couple of days ago. All of us as commissioners and city council members, in the past, they have kicked these problems down the road. And I can list five right off the top, the good doctor during COVID, dispatch, the contracts with dispatch. The costs that are incurred when it comes to these Title 25s. They have asked, the hospitals asked for solutions for these things.
Move on, next to is new business budget adjustment discussion.
So this is what I was talking to Jim earlier about, we're gonna have to put more money in the county road fund. And so all these are a resolution from the next meeting. I don't have the, um, exact amount, cause I talked to Jim. I know, cause that $5,000 that you guys approved, that change order from the engineer. There was, um, the blade, that, I have to do that. And then he said, um, 16,000.
For our match.
So once I get that out from Jim, I'll find out exactly how much I'll be assuming for my budget adjustment. They don't have that many, so.
We knew it was coming, we just didn't know the amounts and when, so. Okay? Any other on the budget adjustment discussion? Next is application discussion.
So I don't know if we have a discussion, Michael.
The application, do we have? Who wants to set them up for the, any interviews with the fair board members?
Yeah, I'll bother you if you have an executive session.
Well, Michael had said that.
Yeah, cause it is kind of, yeah, it shouldn't be, I don't think I put any executive session up, I would.
Didn't we just tell David they're going to do the interviews and then just?
No, that's for the.
No, that's for the management.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This is for the, for the fair board members.
Two hundred, sorry.
I'm okay with setting up interviews.
For the next, you wanna do it for the next meeting?
Do it, set them up for like right after lunch, say like at one, 1:30 and two. Just say we can set them up for half hour increments for how many we got.
Yep. Trying to, do you think we need to, do us, I don't know, is getting people on the board, it's important to get things going. If that helped to do it sooner, I don't, I don't know, but I'm just suggesting, so if we had time.
Can we do it sooner than two weeks? I mean, we have. We'd have a special meeting for it.
And interviews.
But we could make appointments that same day, right after our interviews.
Oh, yeah, that's true. I, you, yeah, I'm okay with that.
In two weeks from now, we can do our interviews and make our appointments that same day.
Get them help.
Yeah, get, that way to get them moving quicker.
As soon as we can, but I.
Here at the court to set up the interviews in, after lunch, in two weeks for a meeting.
They may have to take a lot.
Yeah, that way they.
Correct. Do we wanna invite them to sit in on that?
Yes. To do, we usually do interviews in executive session, just in case something personal comes up to them. And then we, when we come back to open session, then we can make our decisions and vote on it. It'd be nice to have Ken in your new.
Right.
Well, we may get more before then.
And I understand, I understand the situation that we're in right now. But there's a possibility of us placing someone on that board against Billy or David's wishes.
Doesn't matter.
I mean, that's, that happens on everybody.
Well, it does, but usually when they got a full board, they can consider the, the application and when they have to approve it, correct? No.
I'm sure you guys just say.
Oh, they don't, the fair board has no say in who's on the board.
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's, kind of a lot of times the boards, you know, they know somebody to be good on the board, they go out and recruit them, but it's up.
That's up to them to make that decision, so it doesn't matter to them.
We just need a good team player. That's not the.
That's not the goal, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the only thing I, I really ask.
And that's what we wanna give, not just you, with the team player.
All right. I'll work out, I'll do that for after lunch or the next meeting. Anything else under application discussion? Next up is the Rock Springs RMP letter to the BLM. It said, last night I got a letter from Drew, she prepared a letter for us to sign, for chairman to signature to send on to the BLM, requesting the BLM to withdraw their RMP, which is Resource Management Plan in the Rock Springs area. I believe it's over a million acres that the BLM is wanting to take over, control of down in that area. They dropped a 1,300-page document on everybody's desk and give a 30-day window to make comments on it. Usually you want comments before you drop the plan, well, they're just saying, here's our plan, this is what we're going to do. The governor's got letters, sending the letters to the BLM under bullet. I think all 23 counties were going to send letters to the BLM, ask them to withdraw it. If they don't, there was probably going to be a long heated lawsuit going. It's kind of the gist of it. It's a, it's a big area down there and it's not good for the state of Wyoming at all. They are, what I, what I've got from it is they are blocking any kind of energy production thing, they paid no attention to the migratory corridors that's in that area. It's, it's bad for the state of Wyoming. And you basically have to be a environmental engineer to understand the language they put in it. And I think they did that on purpose just to confuse people. So I guess I'm of course pleasure on, I'm a chairman to signature on that, letter to the BLM. Questions? Yeah. I was going to, oh, yeah, chairman to decide. Second.
A second.
A motion, profit second, to authorize chairman to signature on a letter to the BLM asking to withdraw their Resource Management Plan in the Rock Spring. They, it's tied to the Rock Springs RMP, it was titled. Is there any other discussion?
Just a couple of things I wanted to bring up, just to keep things open, I was, I found this comment of this section pretty interesting. It said, over 73% of the land within Sweetwater County is owned by the United States of Maine, managed by several federal agencies, including BLM, US Forest, US Fish and Wildlife and Bureau of Reclamation, which is a huge percentage, it's a huge county and a huge percentage on top of it. And noticing maybe why that is the case, natural resources within the region provide a variety of economic development opportunities, obviously, including, but not limited to mining, mineral production, gas, oil, trona, potash, lithium, it's a pretty big one right now, uranium, development, timber production, agriculture, grazing and tourism, outdoor recreation, which I think is exactly placed where they viewed it to be placed on the very end. Oh, by the way, let's not forget about, you know, our selling marketing strategy, which is recreation. It was mentioned at the end, I just thought, I'd point that out.
And just a note from people here, you think Teton County is 95% state federally owned. So that's why you wonder, some of the problems coming out of Teton County is they don't have much control over anything, so, just a side note. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes say nay? Motion carried. Get for the agenda. Rise up there. I got you following me for once. Are these lights on? Two or legs over there, Walter.
I'm sorry, bud.
Me, I'm the, I'm the bad guy. I pulled your voucher for your trip to Nevada because I have some questions and concerns about it. What I would like you to do is to go through and possibly break it out a little bit more so it shows that you don't go over the meal amount per day per person, because it seemed like some of them were a little high. And I had a question as to why you stayed in Gillette.
Well, the Gillette one's even, they worked, both of them had to work that Friday shift. Had to be out of the, they had to be there approximately 3 o'clock in the morning, so they fly on, so it takes a little longer, even in Gillette, check in. So then they had 11 hours worth of flying and layover and stuff to get to Reno, because if you've ever tried to fly from Reno, from this area to there, it's, it's difficult, there's no, like Vegas, when they used to do it there, it's PK. So that's why I sent them up there early, because I got to get them there. If we'd had a car problem or something at night and we still had hours to get there, that's one thing, but if we got there on time, they don't leave and then we probably couldn't go and we're out the money for the training.
So I'm satisfied with that. But I did, I, I guess I'd like to ask a little bit more breakout of the meals.
Yeah, and we can do that, the one, the one problem you run into in Reno, I think, so I'm going to give you an example. We had this exact conversation with a lieutenant and I went to Reno for court security training, the US Marshals. If you rent a car, I can, we can keep under the per diem, because you can travel out or you use taxi service, which is super expensive. Then you can stay under. But when you're confined to that area, the way Reno's made up to that hotel or that immediate area, you're, you're kind of stuck.
I understand that, but we do have, you know, we try to keep everybody.
So you're, you're asking for, and I didn't notice that they weren't itemized, but you need itemized receipts.
Just, you know, there's two people, if it breaks, if you break it out, it may be fine. It just looks like it's a little bit high.
Well, it is high, I'll tell you that.
So if, if, you know, I understand there's ways, maybe this is something we need to look at if you're, if you're traveling to
Throw something up there.
Somewhere, if we're traveling somewhere, where's higher price, maybe we need to look at that.
Like the state and the federal government, their per diems are adjusted to wherever that location is. So like when I was in Department of Corrections and we had to go somewhere like, well, we had to go to LA for that, that training, your, your per diems are adjusted for those every day.
And perhaps we should look at that, but we don't have it here now. So to be fair to everybody, if you do that.
Yeah, well.
I'd feel comfortable, I don't.
Yeah, well, I'll have all that by, so we can all look at that.
Wait, you, you, you guys say what you think.
I don't think a breakdown is valuable, I understand the, the location of where things are, I mean.
You know, and I want to tell you this, too, I don't send people to Reno, like I said, I don't even go myself now for the Western states training because it is expensive. The, this is a huge deal that we send our guys down there, I don't know if you guys are aware, but there's an association called the Northwest Shuttle Association. So when we have to extradite prisoners from other states, we have two ways to do it, we have to go ourselves and get them and bring them home. There's a significant expense there, we can't hardly ever do that because it takes two people out of the jail for a long period of time. The other way is a private transport company, so Washington is the last one we have. Private would have been about 2,900, US Marshals would have been about 6,000 to bring them. The Northwest Shuttle, if you remember that association, what that is, is it's a community of sheriff's offices and jails across member, member states, which is just about all states west of Mississippi right now. The jail will transport the guy to this jail, this jail will transport the guy to this jail, this jail, and then they, they kind of just work in this direction. The problem being is it's extremely convoluted, I mean, you can imagine it like trying to route trains and all this stuff at all at once, so the necessity to get there is you need to, these two needed to know who their contacts are on that process. Because there's times we'll have that inmate traveling for maybe up to two months to get them here, but the, the nice thing is there's no cost. Just like, I think in the last 12 to 14 months, I mean, talking about 18,000 we've saved by using Northwest Shuttle, because there is no cost related to it other than probably about every few years, we have to, we have to show our faces at one of those trains to keep the membership, there's no cost to be a member other than.
I suspected about the travel, but I, I think breaking that down is better to.
To do that most, we can have all that back so we can hold.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it, I think it might work out, but it works out like we already said and it's fine, but if you look at it, they're going, well, it's over, you know, the amount. It may be over.
Yeah, there's no doubt.
Reno is an expensive per diem area, so maybe that's an idea to look at in the future is that we look at the areas they're going, it is, I mean, go to New York and that's a pretty big one too.
Yeah, like I said, you can look back, the last time any of us went in Reno was for the court security, you know, we had to do it, so.
The travel made sense, I kind of suspected it had something to do with probably having to get there at 3:00 in the morning or something like that.
Well, and if we'd have missed that flight, absolutely, it's a done deal, you know, and that's why we'll just get up there, so you're there.
Are you getting down the future, I guess, a heads up, if you're going to send somebody that, you know, like to Reno, that we've kind of got a heads up that we're going to be expecting that, you know, and we, we definitely need to, maybe we'll need to adjust our policy on, when you're going places like that, you know, give us heads up so we can know it. Another question, I just, do we, do we want to hold that bill and not pay it or do we want to pay it and then get that explanation behind it, because I don't want to get late payments, I hate it with late payment on the credit card.
I'm okay with paying it, if they break it down, I mean, that, they can break it down later, so it fits in there.
We have them, you know.
Yeah, I'm okay with that too, and, and it brings, and it brings up a good thing for us to think about.
Yeah, we tried to, the last time this happened, when Dean and I went, we tried to get that done last time, because both of us had worked for the state and, you know, when they send you someplace that's a little more expensive, it's obvious, you know, and there's ways around it, I mean, you could rent the car and the car falls under that, I mean, the meals would be cheaper, but then, you know, I'm, I'm trying to be a common sense guy here, but, well, you know, if I spend an extra $2 on a meal, it's not cheaper than the car.
I'm going to, if we paid the, the credit card, was it on my credit card?
Yeah.
Okay, that number, 7.
1369.
71369, with the understanding of an itemized explanation on the backside to avoid fees.
So, second, motion profit second, to pay doctor 71369, give us an explanation at the next meeting. On the itemized bill. Any, any discussion? Any other discussion? All of the favors, please say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes say nay? Anything else you think comes to the board? You're out of questions, Dave.
No, I brought it up, we need a credit card machine, we spent money to get it. I had that, had that, that app, the app was a little under $200, that's like $190, something like that. If not, we'll bring it up next time.
That's for the use of the force.
That turns the lights on and off, so we know we're at least getting paid for electricity, right? You've got your budget, we can dig around your budget.
Yeah.
Yes, give us the permission to do it. Oh, yeah, then we're the board of two, we need to make decisions for this board.
Something commercial to allow them to buy a credit card machine or a credit card device to handle their power.
Yes, I second.
That motion profits, second, to authorize the Fair Board to, the two member favor board to purchase the app for the billing of the, for the indoor arena.
It's indoor arena.
For the indoor arena. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes say nay?
Probably save money with that app.
That's what he said, you can have the dust pump.
Right now, we're losing money, so.